Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council, July 24th, 6:00 PM in council chambers. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? Present.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Can you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will move the agenda around a little bit. We're going to have our presentations first. We do have a presentation first from the Roadmasters Vet Club of Michigan. If you want to step right up.
I am Rick Williams, the President of the Roadmasters Corvette Club of Michigan. And for the last four years, we have been getting great support from city council in the city of Southfield for our events held right here in the city of Southfield. We wanted to take this time to represent, I mean to present the council with a token of appreciation for the things y'all have supported us in for the last four years. So, on behalf of the Roadmasters Corvette Club, we'd like to present the council with this award and thanks for your support for all our events, blessing of the vets and the things we have done in the city of Southfield for the last four years.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I thought we were going to get Corvettes.
I couldn't drive a Corvette up in here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
And truly hope to continue the relationship going forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if I may say, it's actually mutual with all of the support that the the club has given the city. I know that when we've asked you to show up for something, you've been there, whether it was the Fourth of July Parade, or the Domestic Violence Event, or Martin Luther King. So, we appreciate you, all of you. And your community spirit and sense of giving is greatly, greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, and we will continue. We will continue.
Absolutely.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's always nice partnering with organizations that help our city. Next, we have a presentation on voter information.
Your Honor, I'd like to present Janelle Thomas, who is our intern and college student that is apprenticing with us this summer, and she has a presentation on voting in Southfield.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, council members and community. My name is Janelle Thomas. I'm currently interning in the city clerk's office. This is my presentation on voting in Southfield.
Can you move the mic closer?
Sorry. Is this better? Okay. So, I would like to begin by making sure everyone knows that there is a primary election this August 8th. The city clerk's office is on the ballot. There's four candidates, and the two candidates that get the most votes from this election will go on to be on the ballot for the November general election. So, how to vote in Southfield. The easiest and first way is to just come out to the polls on Election Day, which again is Tuesday, August 8th. The next way is absentee voting. So, you can come into the clerk's office and get an application for an absentee ballot and get your ballot right away. But you can also fill out an application online at the Michigan Voter Information Center's website, which is listed up there. You can apply for an absentee ballot up until the Friday before the election by 5:00 PM, which is August 4th. So, the state of Michigan is now a no reason absentee state, so you can cast an absentee ballot without having a reason. The Michigan law requires that an application is signed every time there is an election. So, that's why you continue to get ballots and applications in the mail. But on the new application for this year, there's a box that says, "I want to vote absentee in all elections. Automatically send me an absent voter ballot for all elections." So, this box, starting the November election, instead of continuing to get the applications in the mail, you'll automatically get your ballot. And a signature is required in order to get your ballot. So, early voting is expected to be available for the November general election. You will vote in person at a polling location and insert your ballot into a tabulator. And the voting, in-person voting is nine days, up to nine days before the election. So, you can track your ballot at the Michigan Voter Information Center website. You can insert your name, birth month and year, driver's license number, your address or your county, and you'll be able to see your ballot and where it's being tracked. So, you'll be able to see the election date, when your application was received, and when your ballot was sent and received. Also, on the same page where you view where your ballot is, you can see the rest of your voter registration information. So, you can see whether or not you're registered, the upcoming elections, your polling location and precinct, your city clerk, their name, location and hours, and the rest of your voting district information, such as your county, which is Oakland County, the city of Southfield jurisdiction, your precinct, and your public school system, and your courts. Online voter registration makes it easier for people to vote. You can register to vote at the Michigan Voter Information Center website. And you can also use nonpartisan websites such as vote411.org and rockthevote.org that will also connect you to the MVIC website. So, in the 2022 midterm election, Michigan had the highest youth voter turnout in the country, with 37% of young adults ages 18 through 29 voting. So, usually about 64% of people vote in the presidential elections, while less than 20% vote in local elections. It's important to vote in your local elections because they elect who represents you most closely and also have proposals and initiatives that also impact you. For example, who runs your school board, how your garbage is collected, and other community So, these are percentages from the Southfield general election from last year. About 40% of young adults ages 18 through 21 voted, and almost 70% of adults ages 60 and over voted in the 2022 general election in this city. So, education plays a role, and who votes, not just among young adults, but of all voters. In the 2022 national midterm election, almost 60% of voters did not have a college degree. So, when young people from various backgrounds have access to opportunities that help them develop their civic knowledge and skills, they get the power to make a difference. Decision-making becomes more representative among communities, and they benefit from this. Despite being a collection of different individuals, young people share several traits that have the potential to make them great civic participants and leaders. They offer fresh perspectives on specific problems, frequently contribute original thoughts, and can be an endless supply of passion and energy for social change. The future of the country and our local communities is heavily influenced by young people. Almost all topics touch youth, and many affect them uniquely, including education, healthcare, the environment, immigration, housing, gun violence, and foreign policy. Young people who vote and take part in civic affairs may provide insightful viewpoints to these concerns and actively influence how their future is shaped. Our democracy will not function to its full capacity if young are excluded or do not engage. Youth are essential members of their communities because they have strong social ties and influence the culture. Young people are sometimes at the forefront of activism and other initiatives to help address community problems. Communities are stronger and more resilient when young adults engage and contribute. So, civic engagement is when both political and nonpolitical individuals and organizations protect their public values and make change in a community. Some ways to engage civically are voting, of course, volunteering, serving in community organizations such as the League of Women Voters, discussing social issues, and following and watching the news to know what's going on in your community. And some ways to increase civic engagement are attending city council meetings such as these, and specialized forums, and other organized community meetings, asking questions to your local representatives that have been elected to represent to you. Voter registration drives are an amazing opportunity to get people registered to vote and more information about elections. Some high schools and colleges and school clubs still mandate community service hours for graduation, and serving in community cleanups, gardens, watch clubs, and other community organizations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Brightwell?
I definitely appreciate the presentation, a very thorough presentation. It's worthy of being broadcast on our cable channel as a standalone and a full day education between now and the election, and every election for this year. So, I would like to see this presentation possible broadcast on our cable.
It's already in the works to be broadcast as a standalone.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Listen to the star in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the council members?
Councilman, any other questions? Councilman Banks?
You did a great job.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we'll move to our communications portion of the meeting. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. The first speaker, each speaker will also have three minutes. The first speaker is Ronald Chenault. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Ronald Chenault. I have resigned in the city of Southfield for almost 40 years. I have a problem with my roads over on secluded lane between Prescott and Temple. It's a, I live in a quarter sack, so when we go out of the quarter sack on a main road, there's holes, lots of holes, and they're not being fixed. They try to fix them, but it's not working. We have some holes, so right now, some of us are having problems with our tires, with our suspension. So, we need the roads fixed between Prescott and Temple. See, we have cars that come off of Lasha, which is eight and a half mile, eight and a half mile runs into secluded lane at Prescott. So, those cars come through there are trucks, big trucks, semi-trucks, whatever kind of truck goes through there, because they try to avoid the lights. So, they use our community as a thoroughfare, and it's tearing them up. So, if you, when you fix the roads, put some kind of sign up there to keep the exo-cars from coming up our community and tearing our roads up, because it's just going to keep happening again, if you allow that, you know. So, because we don't have, we don't have the presence of the police anymore. I don't think they come over there because the roads are too bad, might tear up the cars. So, that's my problem, and that we need to address, because if you don't, I'm going to come back. I'm going to keep coming back to fix. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I have some pictures if you want to see.
If you want to submit the pictures, you give them to our.
You don't shoot, because you don't shoot at the airport.
You can pass them over to our city clerk, and she can distribute them to us. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, after this gentleman called me, I did go out to secluded lane. It's interesting, and I took some pictures, and I sent them to Ms. Schultz. It's interesting to note that much of the original concrete is still in very good shape. It's the work that was done some years back with patching that has not held up.
Okay, thank you. Next is Mr. and Mrs. Frank Thomas.
Yes, good evening. We're here to support our neighborhood gas station to serve alcohol, beverage in the gas station. And we've been here in the city of Southfield for pretty much 30 years. And we'd like to stand with them to support them doing that. If they're willing to expand their establishment to sell alcohol, then I don't see anything wrong. I know throughout the land, there's other places that are doing the same thing, and I didn't see anything wrong with them, you know, trying to do the same thing, too. So, that's pretty much what it is. We stand behind them 100%, you know, to do so.
Okay, thank you. And that's something we're going to be discussing later on in the meeting as well.
Oh, okay.
So, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Our next speaker is A. Griffin.
How you doing, Mr. Mayor? Do you share, Chris, great guy. That's all I can say. He deserves this. I ain't going to BS y'all. It ain't in my nature, I'm going to be different than everybody else, because I ain't got time to be up here real. I got other stuff to do. But he's a good guy, and I know if y'all give him this, we only got one place to go, and then we can go home. We ain't got to go nowhere else. I love Chris. He's a good guy. So, I believe he deserves to have that policy, or however you guys do it, I don't know, you know. But give it to him. Give him a shot at least. Everybody deserves a chance. I believe somebody gave you a chance. They gave you a chance, you a chance, you a chance, you, all y'all. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Antonio Ballard.
Good evening. My name is Antonio Ballard. I'm here in support of a good friend of mine that next year on the 31st, I mean, next week on the 31st, I have been residing in Southfield for 20 years. And for those 20 years, 17 years, I've been going to this one gas station. I don't go to gas stations outside of this gas station. I'm here to support him and other gas stations in Southfield. I work in Warren, and I've noticed the gas stations in Warren sell alcohol and beers and stuff like that. I would like to see the buddy of mine at the Sunoco gas station be able to sell the same things as other cities. And I believe that it will also bring money to the city of Southfield. And this gas station that I go to is a block away, so sometimes I ride my bike and I go to this gas station. But I'm in support for our neighborhood gas stations in Southfield to sell alcohol. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Greg Keeler, Southfield, Michigan. When Beechwood came here two weeks ago, they asked a question twice. The question they asked was, please explain to them about easements. What is the ruling on easements? And when you were going through, like you were answering all the questions, that was the second time that question was asked and was not answered. There needs to be some clarity on it. And those ladies said, no, they weren't selling their land. They shouldn't have been coming back to them three, four times, and shouldn't have been threatening them for their land. They should be able to sit there as senior citizens and widows in their house in peace. If they don't see a price that's worth selling their property, they don't have to sell their property, unless it's a law that says you must sell your property. And is that law spread out evenly amongst everybody? Or is that just residents? Or is that just certain residents? Or is it just for residents and not for corporations? The other thing was, the people from Beechwood said that the splash pad was a good idea. So did I. But yet, from this council, two people said, no, they did not say that. That should not go on y'all records, or somebody from up there should have said something, because everybody did not say that. The majority of the people said they did like the splash pad, but just not in their neighborhood. And they explained why and gave reasons why, but somehow or way, that didn't seem to hit your conscience. And by the same token, when you look at how much money was spent or wasted on this splash pad, and how many times had it been rejected by that neighborhood for pretty much the same reason for the last two or three years? If the road would have been fixed, it would have been made properly, like y'all was doing for Triumph, y'all doing all these studies and everything else to make sure it was safe to get in and out. But Beechwood, y'all didn't make sure it was safe to get in and out, and that's a major issue. The minutes here should be, should have been challenged, should have been corrected by somebody up there. So, it does say that people from Beechwood did say they liked the pad, just didn't want it in their neighborhood, because this is a legal document. And if what you're saying is the people are lying, or you didn't hear the people, somebody up there should have challenged, since y'all have the microphone afterwards and you can speak, and you don't want nobody from back here yelling at you. But keep in mind, that's a legal document.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Before you have voted, you can say yes, no, seven minutes.
Hello, my name is Brian Ross. I am a resident in Southfield, been a resident for over 30 years, and I do support my neighbor gas stations here in Southfield to have the beer and liquor license. It'll be more convenient and gas-saving for all the residents in the area, and it'll be more, you know, less runs we got to make, and we'll be able to save in gas, and gas ain't getting no lower in prices, so it'll be a big help.
Okay.
To allow my neighbor gas stations here in Southfield to have that license.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Lawrence Richard. I live at 25408 Grand Concord Street, Southfield, Michigan. I resided there for 13 years. I'm here to support Sunoco for the liquor beer license.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everybody. I'm not going to waste your time. I'm here to support beer, liquor at the gas stations. I live at 25139 Parsons Drive, and I don't like the idea of taking my money to Oak Park or anywhere else at that factory. But I don't see a problem with it. I feel safe with it. I think it's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Yolanda Haynes.
Hi, Yolanda Haynes, 24501 council. I was under the impression that I was going to speak when you had the issue, so I didn't know. But I understand that there's an issue about the liquor at the convenience stores, and I want to bring up the word convenience. That means able to get to, access to, in your location. I was just doing some research, and I just noticed on Eight Mile that there are six liquor stores that are not in Southfield, but a rock's throw distance from Southfield. So, what we're talking about here is really small business owners. We have Meyer with at least about five or six aisles of alcohol and liquor that you can go to and get at, you know, in a minute if you can get in the store and out, and you can actually sit there if you want to in your car and drink it, if that's the fear that people think that people are going to just go get it and have car accidents or things like that. I think a lot, what we're talking about here is fear of what's going to happen, but I think we need to more look at the small business owners that are still trying to survive here post-COVID. We have restaurants. We have restaurants that have closed, uh, that have not opened back up. And one thing I don't like, I don't like to go outside of Southfield, outside of Oakland County, to get anything. I think we need to start looking at that, and I think also the residents need to understand that if these businesses close, we're gonna have quite a bit of blight in our community. So I think we need to understand what these business people are doing, talk to some of them, and really try to see what's going on with those businesses, not have so much fear about what could happen. It could happen anywhere, like I said, at Meyer or any other place where there is a sale of alcohol. If you don't wanna go outside of your city to buy other things, let's make it convenient for us to go to these businesses and support these small businesses who are still suffering post-COVID to survive, to pivot and make changes to, uh, all the different things that are still happening. And I think that's more important, that we do look at our small businesses and support them in their, uh, struggle to stay afloat and also to provide conveniences for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, our next speaker is Larry Hicks. Okay. Our next speaker is Vanessa Burrell.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm here to bring, uh, an issue to your attention as a council. Um, we had our roads and sewers repaired in our subdivision. I'm on Aberdeen between San Quentin and Cantalpa. And this is my neighbor Fred. He had the same issue. Um, when they brought their equipment, they killed the grass on the San Quentin side. But unfortunately, when they did put the seating down, it's weeds. And it's terrible. And they just patched a small section, like maybe twelve to eighteen feet of Fred's lawn. But the rest of it's totally just wild weeds. And it's done slightly. Prior to this, the construction and the work that they did, we all had just plain beautiful green lines. That neighborhood takes pride in how it looks. And several neighbors had issues. And if you would drive through, uh, that community, you would see that there's quite a few seedlings that were put down on people's lawns. And I had planned to go to those homes to try to reach the neighbors, but it's been raining and all these storms. I really didn't get a chance to talk to the neighbors, other than the ones on my block. But we all have had issues, one issue or another. I had problems with the workers trashing my lawn, 'cause I'm on a corner. So they would take their pizza boxes and trash from their meals and just throw it on my, in my yard, which really annoyed me. And I told them about it, and they said, well, it's our, um, the, it wasn't our team, but it's the people that we hired to help with the work. But I told them, they're still responsible. So I cleaned it up repeatedly, but they threw their water bottles into the area where they were redoing the sewer, the pipes. I took my doggy pooper-scooper and pulled the bottle out because I didn't want that in, in that area. But it's annoying to know that we spent millions of dollars on our roads and sewers to have the community treat it in that manner. And we're still having problems. My lawn is still awful. And I'm sorry, I've been running from place to place today. I brought personal pitchers instead of the pitchers of the lawn. But I will email, I emailed, um, President Pro Tem Taylor the pitchers, um, and she forwarded them on to the building department and those individuals. But I don't know what you can do with the constr-, with, um, I think it's CHM, or I'm always messing up the acronym, but the, um, group that did the work, I contacted them repeatedly. I've been doing this since last year. I started May of this year, just trying to get them to fix my lawn. Because if I have to pay to do that, you know it's very expensive to do. And I shouldn't have to do it, since they are the ones that destroyed the lawn. So I would like for you to address that issue, and hopefully we can get it reconciled. And the same thing with my neighbor's lawn. I, they live across the street from me. I see their lawn all the time. It's always beautiful, but now I see a field of weeds, and it's just not right.
Thank you. Um, we do have our city engineer in the back who's been listening and taking notes. She oversees all these, all these road projects. Um, so she will, um, make note of it as well.
And I just wanna thank Vanessa for bringing this to you guys' attention. I'm Fred Pinkston. I live at two-seven-six-one-six Aberdeen, and that's at the northeast corner of Aberdeen to San Quentin. Uh, basically, the Cantalpa Oaks County Park is my backyard. It's on the other side of the fence from my backyard. And the entire length of that, you know, where my grass between the sidewalk and the street, the entire length of it, that's where they stored their equipment out over the winter. They had equipment and materials there. And it was there all winter long, and I didn't mind because I knew they were working to make the roads better. But once they finally did get the equipment and stuff out of the way, they really did redo the grass, and that's why it just got overgrown with weeds and everything. And, uh, and I, we get the lawn done regularly with the service, but that part of it looks pretty bad, so I'm just hoping something can happen.
Okay. And, um, Lee, do you mind? Ms. Schultz, just raising your hand and, so she can, if you, you know, after, if you wanna talk to her out in the hall, and she can take your address and follow up with you as well.
Thanks, Vanessa.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair.
Yes.
Uh, I would like to address that, to, to the extent that, uh, restoration is a very big part in a contract that we let to vendors that are doing good work in the city of Southfield. And so if anyone is having issues with their property not being restored, you know, make sure you bring those to, to council immediately, because those, those, you know, there are repercussions to all vendors who are doing, uh, they might be doing good work, but they are not completing the job as required, which has a big, restoration is a big part of, of any contract that we let. So I'm, I will be following up with Ms. Schultz and anybody else with respect to this issue, uh, uh, because it seemed to be either sloppiness or just someone not respecting the old properties.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yes, Councilman Banks.
I'd like to ask that all of council received that report, Mr. Brightwell, not just one person, um, regarding this issue? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, our next speaker is Pamela Gerald.
Good evening, council, and to the mayor and everybody that's in this auditorium. You know, I'm sick and tired of this narrative that the city of Southfield is stealing people's homes. If you don't understand what an easement is, you cannot accuse this city of taking people's homes. Understand what you're talking about. Look it up for yourself. And all of these council people are accessible, as well as the city administrator, the mayor, to talk about these issues. So let's stop with the false narrative. The city of Southfield does not take people's property. Now, on a more important note, I'm sure all of you saw that poster outside. If there's anybody in here that has experienced gun violence in your immediate family, your extended family, your neighborhood family, or just friends in general, or watching the news, you have an opportunity to come here to the Southfield Pavilion on Monday, July thirty-first, from five-thirty to eight-thirty, to talk to our esteemed police chief, Elvin Barron, and his partner, esteemed police chief, Jeff King, from Farmington Hills, Michigan. And the question that they're going to ask, is it possible to reduce gun violence? If so, what is the solution, and how do we accomplish it? And there are also some other law enforcement executives that's on this panel to talk to the residents. This is your time to have your voice heard and get your seat at the table to put your solutions out there. We have the Oak Park Public Safety Director, Steve Cooper, that's gonna be there. We have the Detroit Police Chief, James White, along with Sheriff Raphael Washington from Wayne County. The time is now for men and women to take a seat at the table and speak up. But it's also the time to stop violence. We're sick and tired of thoughts and prayers. We want action, and we want policy. So I want the residents to hear me say, and I've been around for forty years, at this podium regularly for forty years, never ran for city council or any office in the city of Southfield. I have been your independent voice. This is a forum for you, right here in the Southfield Pavilion, twenty-six thousand Evergreen Road. Instead of complaining, because when you complain, you remain, bring your solutions to the table. This is not gonna be a pissing contest to say, I called the police in Detroit and they took two hours to respond, and the police are not gonna harass you because they don't like what you said. This is a forum for the people to offer good solutions on how we can stop this insanity. Let's stop gun violence.
Thank you. All right. That concludes our communications portion. Yes?
I'm sorry, I'm taking a chance to find the board and they say that every now and then, so I'm about to say it.
Yep. So just give your name and address, please.
Sure. It's Andrea McDonald. Uh, my address is two-five-five-nine-zero Grand Concourse, of course, Southfield.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I, I wanted to begin by saying, um, I, I was a little bit late, so I do apologize, but I'm a bit uncomfortable with the amount of police that are here. It feels like their presence is to chill free speech, but I, again, I missed part of what you said, so I'll leave it alone for now. Um, the reason I'm speaking is because I recently received a tax bill. I've been on and off in Southfield since nineteen ninety-four. Um, so, the house was sold and, but into the family, and now the tax bill is at six thousand dollars when it was at four thousand. It's apparently due to some laws passed in nineteen ninety-four. But I'm seeing a six thousand dollar tax bill when it's equivalent to more expensive cities, um, including West Bloomfield, where I see improvements in the roads and the housing, but I'm not seeing it here. Um, the steps of Forty-S sixth are crumbling and a disaster, but one part of it is fixed. I'm not sure why we couldn't fix it all. They repaired the hockey, uh, stadium, or whatever you call it, I guess, but the swimming pool is, is down. Uh, our schools, we have one decent high school that I believe has a report card of an A, and then Southfield has, last time I checked, it may be improved, but it's a report card of a C. Uh, your school system is a direct reflection of, of your housing value, and I don't see that here. When my daughter went to Stevenson, it was an A school. Dr. Hen Trail, God rest her soul, was an excellent principal, and every school she went to automatically overperformed. But for whatever reason, that's not happening with our schools. So again, I just, I'm not so much upset about the money. I am, but I wanna see where this money is at. To my knowledge, Southfield has one hundred Fortune Five Hundred companies with their headquarters here. Wh- where's this money going? Uh, that, that I don't see improvements in, we don't have fireworks? I mean, I'm, I'm just not seeing, my, my roads are in disrepair. We don't have fireworks. We don't have the things that we used to have back in the nineties. W- and for small businesses, I mean, are there funds so that we, as the, as a demographic here, can create our own small businesses so that we can have access to the resources that we need? I don't wanna see any of my residents, uh, lose their home, but, but, but I'm paying six thousand dollars a month, so I, I mean, I'm sorry, a year. So I know I'm not the only one. Um, yeah, that's, that's pretty much what I wanted to say. Uh, I, I hope we can address this. Uh, I don't know where I can go to or who I need to speak with, but that's something that's important to me. Uh, if it's the mayor, okay. I mean, if it's you guys, okay. But I, I, I wanna see improvement with six thousand dollars in taxes.
Have you reached out to the city assessor?
Um, no, I have not. I just got the tax bill and almost had a mild heart attack, so I, it's, this was fairly recent.
Some of the things you mentioned there, you can talk to the city assessor, he can explain the tax bill and the breakdown of what goes to the city, what goes to the county, and goes to the school.
And he asks the budget for the city per year?
Um, he can direct you to the, the budget for the city is on the website.
Okay. But I mean, it's just like, am I going here, there, and everywhere? I just want somebody to tell me what can be done and what's going to be done.
So if you can leave your name and phone number with our city clerk, we can, we'll have someone give you a call.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. All right. That concludes communications. Next, we have two sets of minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move the approval of our regular meeting minutes of June twentieth, twenty-twenty-three.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, to approve the regular meeting minutes of June twentieth, twenty-twenty-three. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to move the approval of our regular meeting minutes of June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, to approve the regular meeting minutes of June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three. Uh, any discussion questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next, we have several items on our consent agenda. Does any council member wish to have any items pulled for further discussion? Councilman Banks?
Item C, please.
Item C? And Councilman Brightwell?
Item A.
Item A. Okay. Um, why don't we have the discussion first? Um, item A is authorization to purchase mailroom postage equipment. Why don't you, we have our technology director here who's, who can address your question?
Uh, I'm, I'm ready and favorable to decide, but I think when it, when indicated that it would be handling ballots, mailing ballots, I want to, I wanna get a clearance with respect to, will somebody from the clerk's office be there while these things are being opened with this machine? And what type of security is in place when we have this high-powered machine that's being operated? I know it's, uh, it's, it's, it's an efficiency issue, but I've never looked at the mailroom that's being, you know, processing, uh, ballots. So you get, I'm getting it up, and you have that to operate.
So that machine will be run by the clerk's office to process the ballots. The machine actually is, you know, it's kinda like a, got a tray, put all, all the envelopes that you wanna open up, and it feeds it through, does a micro perf along the edge of the envelope, so you can slide the contents out. And it also can imprint the time, the operator, and the date of when that was opened on there for, for that chain of custody on there. But it should be all run by the clerk's office. We'll just have the machine available for them to use.
Okay. Uh, I just wanna bear the height and, you know, worldwide, at least nationwide, with respect to these ballots. And so I wanna make sure there are no, you know, in this frame of process, and I've never, you know, really got into the processing, but, uh, I'm assuming the mailroom is secure, these ballots are secure from A to Z? And whatever, this, you know.
Actually, the machine will actually be moved into the room where they will be doing the counting. It's not gonna s- sit in the mailroom, that letter opener.
Fidemay.
That's gonna be moved up. It's a kinda like a portable machine that can roll on where you need it to be.
So I just wanna reiterate what, uh, Mr. Housers said. Um, it's a portable machine. We would never open ballots in the mailroom. Um, the machine will be where the secure ballots are, and it'll be at, accessed to us, and then we can return it to them. And so we've discussed this, we got a plan in action, and the ballots will be in the secure location, and the machine will come to us.
Okay. Well, this, if this, and given the current day environment, I just wanna make sure that, that we could explain A to Z is secure with that ballot. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. And this is a wonderful idea from a standpoint of efficiency and process.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions on item A? Okay. And then item C was the twenty-twenty-three DTE Energy Foundation tree planting grant. Councilman Banks?
Thank you. While I, I'm in support of this program, um, this matching grant is for a total of eight thousand dollars. We've had many residents, um, that have lost trees this past year due to, um, the storms that we've had. I don't see any outline here that they will have an opportunity, um, to maybe have one of these trees put in their yard. Um, it mentions, you know, it mentions a, um, city right-of-way.
Through, through the chair?
So can, can, is there any way we can have a program to help the residents that want additional trees to replace those that have fallen down this year?
Well, I, I don't want to speak to planting trees on private property, but typically, my office is responsible for the Woodlands Ordinance, where people cut down trees and don't replace the trees. They pay money into the Tree Trust Fund. And we've been using that money to leverage these DTE tree grants. Uh, it's pretty much free money. We put four thousand dollars in as a match, and we get four thousand. Um, they're, I believe they're required to be planted in the right-of-way. And we've, um, had several successful applications that we've planted these trees along, uh, the city, city center pathways, along, um, uh, different areas. And we had dedicated this particular fund to support the work we're doing on Nine Mile. So it'd be tree planting in the right-of-way on Nine Mile. Uh, I, I can work with city administration to look at the possibility of, um, planting trees on private property. I know there was a program in the past where, um, residents could get trees at wholesale prices and be responsible for planting them. The city would purchase them at wholesale price. But that is different than this program, this grant application that we're asking authorization to proceed on.
And in Councilwoman Banks, a few, a few meetings ago, through the Public Works Department, we did apply, um, we did approve a number of trees that are also being replaced for, for trees that were lost in storms, as well as those who lost them due to road construction.
But I'm not sure if that was in, for public, I mean, for, on public property, I mean, private property, was it?
I believe, our Public Works Director, can, you want to s-
It is public property. It's on the right-of-way.
So we approved a few weeks ago, um, on the right-of-way. Again, we're approving on the right-of-way. What are we doing for the residents that have lost trees?
Yeah. All right, our city administrator will answer that one.
And I apologize for not having all the information. Council President is correct. We recently approved a grant. Those trees will be coming in this September. The city forester does have a list of people who are previously expressed an interest, and some of those trees will be going to those residents. Um, we, the, the mayor has been a very strong advocate regarding this topic as well. We do need a more robust program. Uh, if you recall, and, and again, I don't have the information. If I recall correctly, those trees were in excess of four hundred dollars apiece. A little sticker shock on it. And that was, uh, a, a, a two-and-a-half-inch tree, uh, calibered, at breast height, with, uh, with a two-year warranty planted by a private contractor. And I know, uh, council had approved that in the spring. And then we had such a dry spring that, uh, they, those trees are slated to come starting in September and be installed. But, uh, to your point, Ms. Banks, we could use a more robust program, and it comes down to how we fund it. The city planner has offered in the past to use some of the funding from the, uh, tree, the tree fund. But those dollars are, are very limited. And we are constantly looking for additional ways to fund and plant, uh, trees.
All right, Mr. Mayor?
This question came up, um, last week, and I talked to the city forester, John Thompson. Uh, the tree program exists, continues to exist. They can contact the city forester to order a tree, um, for, uh, planting on private property. The resident pays for the tree and the planting. But that's a program we've had for years, and it's still in existence. I would agree with the city administrator. It probably needs a little more publicity. Um, as I haven't, I, that, that was the reason I called the, uh, the city foresters, because I didn't see anything about it, and I hadn't heard anything about it. But he said, oh, yeah, it's ongoing, so.
But I, that program is great, but I think what Councilwoman Banks is saying is, if we're getting grant money, can that money be used to plant trees on private property for those who lost them due to either construction or storm or things like that?
Personally, I, I think there's limited funds, uh, for private property. We've always had this purchase program, uh, that was cheaper than a nursery. And it planted the, also planted the tree, which is, a lot of people aren't equipped to do that.
Thank you. I thought that program no longer was in existence, so I will let some people know that they should contact the forester. But, um, to Mr. Zorn, I'd like to see if we could put a more robust program, um, together. And maybe we need to do a better job advertising, whether it be on our website or, um, Facebook or wherever.
Advertising promoting that we have a program, especially in the neighborhoods where we've lost trees and where we're, where, where we are rebuilding streets. And I know that seems to be the next area. You're going in and you rebuilt our street. Can I get, you know, and we lost some of our street trees. Um, that's the other. And frankly, we need to figure out how to get this price to be, when we put these out to bid. Uh, we, we need to, you know, we, we may need to have a different approach with, with our purchasing. And maybe we're going out directly to a tree farm and taking a different approach that will have a larger batch come in, uh, and then be more robust in getting our residents to help us maintain these, uh, trees. I've spoken to John that I want a Gator bag. That's that green vinyl bag that holds water on every tree. But just making sure these trees get watered is, 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 as well as just critical to seeing them succeed. If you can get them past that first two years, they'll most likely mature.
Thank you.
And if I may, just one other, just in the last two weeks, the tree, the forester and I've had conversation. A lot of the stock we planted in the seventies, and, and I'll use our crabapple trees, take a good look at them. They're very, they're looking their age. They don't live for, forever. And some of this stock, it, it's time as, as a community that we restart, uh, replacing. And, and in particular, out, the crab trees on, on Evergreen Road. They're, they were planted in the late sixties and the seventies, and they're hitting the end of their life cycle.
Councilwoman Fraser?
Yes, um, when the selection is made for which trees to plant, uh, I presume there's a variety of trees that, uh, get planted because, uh, we made a mistake, not we, but a mistake was made several years ago to plant rows and rows of the same kind of tree. And then when some infestation got into it, uh, they all went away. The elm tree was.
Biodiversity in our tree stock is, is a corner, you know. I know the forester and I've had that conversation as, as well.
Okay, and, uh, if a tree is planted in front of someone's house, are they aware of their responsibility?
Every tree that's planted in front of somebody's home rece- the homeowner receives a detailed guide of the tree, the mulching, and how to maintain it. One of the reasons, as Mr. Zorn has brought up, is the price is so high on the tree was because we're asking the contractor to guarantee it for two years. But then again, do we want to be replacing it? Each tree we put in front of somebody's yard is put there after investigation by the forester to make sure that we have biodiversity, plus that the tree will thrive. Because there are some trees that do better in different types of soil or different microclimates. So we, in the past, we used to buy, I'll just use honey locusts, a thousand, two-hundred honey locusts. And we'd spread them out throughout. Well, the problem was honey locusts don't do well in certain soils, and so we'd end up replacing them. There's a lot more, um, thought, there's a lot more investigation, and it takes more time to put a tree that will fit in, at the front yard of somebody who wants the tree. And that's also been a problem. If you don't take care of the tree, if you hate the tree. I've seen people cut all the branches off a tree they didn't want. I've seen people accidentally cut down the tree because they didn't want it. Um, or planting it over a sewer line, where it blocks the sewer line. That hopefully is way in the past. So, yeah, it, this is a, a real more detailed program.
Very good.
All right, council, any other questions? Okay, thank you. So we have on our consent agenda, item A, authorization to purchase mailroom postage equipment. Item B, authorization to purchase emergency medical supplies and equipment. Item C, authorization to seek the twenty-twenty-three DTE Energy Foundation tree planting grant. Item D, the authorization to seek, keep Michigan Beautiful Grant. Item E, authorization to lease multi-function copier devices. Item F, a two thousand twenty-four Automobile Theft Prevention Authority Grant Subrecipient Agreement between Oakland County and the city of Southfield. And item G, a receipt of bids for elevator and escalator maintenance services.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move the approval of consent agenda items A through G, as mentioned.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to, to approve consent agenda items A through G. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we move to the public hearings and site plans. Our first item is PSLU-two-three-dash-zero-zero-zero-seven, a special use request of NTK Investments.
Good evening. Um, as you stated, PSLU-twenty-three-dash-zero-zero-zero-seven is NTK Investments LLC, properties located at two-one-six-eight-zero-West Eight Mile, on the north side of Eight Mile between Evergreen Road and Loser. Existing zoning is I-one industrial. The special use request is to allow for recreation adult-use marijuana grow facility. This site previously received medical marijuana grow and processing facility approval on June twenty-second, twenty-twenty. Uh, these are, uh, existing conditions. As I stated, current zoning is I-one, future land use is industrial. The site plan is not changing. Uh, there's going to be some modifications on the interior of the building. And, um, sorry. Mr. Kozak is here to talk about his operation. And after the public hearing, we'd both be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Good evening, council. I'm here to answer any questions. I've been up here a couple of times, but is anybody else have any other questions for me?
Well, we'll have a public hearing and, uh, see what other questions may come up.
Could, could I just ask you, Mr. Kozak, just to explain the differences between your current medical marijuana grow and processing and how things may change with the recreational adult use before we go to the public hearing?
Sure, the, the, um, medical adult, medical adult use is, um, given to everybody by a card by the state of Michigan to purchase, uh, medical use, not from us, from a dispensary. But the medical use is going away, so we're trying to convert it to recreational, which will help us with sales in recreational dispensaries. Almost all the dispensaries in Michigan today are going recreational or are recreational.
And will there be any, um, changes in the amount of plants or, or interior?
No, everything will, everything's going to remain the same. The amount of plants that we have in the building, nothing's going to change. It's just basically the seed to sell through the state of Michigan, which allows us and makes it easier for us to sell to dispensaries that are carrying recreational, um, marijuana today, that are selling recreational marijuana today.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so you can have a seat. We will open our public hearing for PSLU-two-three-dash-zero-zero-zero-seven, a special use request of NTK Investments LLC, to grow and process a facility for adult-use marijuana grower in accordance with the Southfield ordinance. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Okay, Pamela Gerald, PO Box one-fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four-eight-zero-three-seven-dash-zero-one-five-five. My telephone number is still the same, two-four-eight-three-four-six-zero-four-three-nine. I just wanted to ask a question. I saw something up there, and it said what it was currently zoned as, and it looked like it was industrial one. And then on the other side of the photo, it said future land use. Is future land use a new zoning? And if it is, can you define it, or is this still going to be industrial one? That's my first question. And then the second question is, I want to know if this petitioner has gone by dream to see how, um, just sophisticated and how, uh, fluent that store is. More importantly, how they appear through whatever type of procedure they use to control the smell of it. So if this petitioner has not gone up there to dream, he should talk to the people up there to see how they did it. And I went on a tour there, and I was just very impressed. We know that kids are doing it. They have been smoking. You're not going to stop them from smoking. And kids always want what they cannot have. So that's all I have to say about that. But if you could clarify that future land use, what is it? I mean, I know what it is in terms of the words, but is this going to be a new zoning? Again, is this going to be I-one? And are you going to inform the public what that means? Thank you.
Thank you. Wait till after the, after all the speakers.
Good evening, councilman, everyone. I am Earl Crum, two-seven-one-two-six, Field Street, Southfield, Michigan, four-eight-zero-seven-six. Understand that this is an existing facility. My question is, who is responsible for monitoring these facilities to make sure that they are operating properly? Next question, what are the procedure for the monitoring? Do they call them before they come? Or do they do an impromptu visit to make sure that operations are being conducted properly? Does the city have any responsibility for monitoring these, these facilities? I'm not sure if the city does or does not. But I know we have a problem with even code enforcement enforcing the codes in Southfield. Yard trash and garbage are sometimes placed on the sidewalk a week without pickup in advance or after the garbage truck to pass. Some individual places their garbage out to be picked up before one o'clock the next day. And so the responsibility of monitoring these facilities should be done properly so that no inaccuracies or misconduct are being involved in these facilities. And before I leave, I'd like to thank Councilperson Banks for always consistently voting on marijuana facility. Thank you.
I mean, voting the way you do on marijuana facility, I voted on.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this PSLU-two-three-dash-zero-zero-zero-seven, special use request of NTK Investments to convert the existing building medical marijuana and processing to an adult-use marijuana grow? to an adult-use marijuana grow? All right, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. I'd like to have the petitioner, if you want to answer some of those questions. But first, Mr. Crowe, can you address the future land use question?
Yep, go back to it. So, as I stated, the current zoning is I-1 industrial. And as you may be aware, the future land use is part of the comprehensive plan that gets reviewed every five years. And this is basically stating that the comprehensive plan is consistent with the zoning. So, there is no zoning change, it's not a new zoning category. It just says that this land is compatible with our current zoning. And it does require special land use in order for the adult-use processing and grow to be permitted.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So, you've heard the questions?
Yeah, I've heard the question. I'm going to start backwards. I'm going to start with the gentleman first. We get state inspected unexpectedly. We just had the state fire marshal representative come into the facility last week. So, they don't call when they're coming, they just show up. And we don't mind that, and they do their job. They go through the whole facility, inspect everything, and make sure everything's in order. If there's any questions to be asked or anything that we're doing wrong, they tell us and they write us up. But everything went well. So, then they also sometimes will call and say, "We want to see the camera footage on a drive," and they'll say, "We're picking it up at this time. We'll send somebody there, and we want it from this time to this time." So, there's, basically, there's, anytime they want, they can show up to the facility and walk right in and do what they need to do. And that's how it is, basically, all over the state of Michigan. And they were just in our facility last week. To answer the lady's question sitting behind me was, Dreams is a beautiful facility. They are recreational. We're a little bit different is we grow the product. The product can be sold for many, many uses, could be sold for shampoos, soap, smoking it, vaping it. We're on the grow end, we're not on the retail end. So, we have to then, we then have to get a state transportation company to basically take it to the facility. We don't take anything ourselves or drive it there ourselves. So, everything's done through the state guidelines. But, yeah, Dreams is a beautiful facility, though. Hopefully, does that answer your question? Yep, okay.
There was also a question about odor control.
Yeah, odor, so we have these machines that clear up all the odor with filters and all that in the facility and all that, take up all the odor. So, I mean, there is really no odor unless you're really inside the room, then there's odor inside the room, but you're physically in the room.
Okay.
If I could, I believe those are carbon scrubbers.
Carbon filters.
Okay, thank you. All right, council, any questions? Okay?
Thank you, council.
If you're ready, we're, Planning Commission, planning departments recommending favorable approval of the special use request of NTK Investments LLC on behalf of the owner, JNR Ventures LLC, subject to the conditions listed above. This also includes approval of the site plan by the city planner, the petitioners to provide an odor control plan, a wastewater control plan, and a security plan, which is reviewed by the police department. And hours of operation are limited based on the regulations, Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Thank you. Counsel?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move the approval of PSLU 23-0007, the special use request of NTK Investments LLC as presented.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve PSLU 23-0007 as presented with the listed conditions. Any further discussion? All those in...
I'm sorry, can I get in real quick?
Sure.
I was just going to ask the petitioner one quick thing, just about your security and how you plan to handle that. Is there, you know, in terms of people breaking in possibly or something like that?
No, you got it.
So, there's a gate that we have in the front, and then we have a full camera system that's just basically monitored with an alarm system, fire alarm system, smoke alarm system, water alarm system. It's all done by the state and City of Southfield guidelines.
Okay. Thank you, that was all.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve PSLU 23-0007 as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries six to one. Thank you. Next item is a PZTA 23-0002, council-initiated zoning ordinance text amendment.
Yeah, thank you. These are several sections of the ordinance are being addressed at once, and this is just an overview, clarifying the definition of city planner, because the title is mentioned as director of planning, planning director, city planner in the ordinance in various places. So, we're cleaning that up in the definitions section. We're also dealing with regulating exterior ice chests and storage, retail sales of beer, wine, mixed spirit, drink product and spirits at gas stations, fence setbacks, materials, and corner clearance, and accessory building height. Again, cleaning up the definition of city planner. The other sections are dealing with gasoline filling stations, clarifying the difference between filling stations and service stations, and gasoline filling service stations, and new retail. General provisions dealing with outside storage, general provisions dealing with exterior ice chests, general business district, B3 uses permitted subject to special approval, and industrial districts required conditions change. We've reviewed this before. These are, on the top are examples of exterior ice chests that may not be accessible or blocking accessible entrances to gas stations, and then indoor ice chest examples that are more accessible to the users and do not block barrier-free access. We have reviewed ice chest compliance since 2018, and back in 2018, 14 stations complied. 10 additional stations have been brought into compliance for a total of 24 stations out of 38, or approximately 66% are currently in compliance. There are still 14 stations in non-compliance and two yet to be constructed. We also looked at, was asked by council to look at where current party liquor stores are in relationship to open filling stations, open service stations, and the potential for beer, wine, and liquor sales in relationship to existing retail. Again, another issue that we're trying to clean up is the side yard setback requirement in single-family, especially on homes located on the corner. Where property owners are losing a good portion of their privacy by not being able to build the fence within one foot of the right-of-way. So, we've cleaned that up. There is an exception to the 25-foot side yard setback for single-family homes that allows fences, as long as they don't block corner clearance. And then there was a requirement about cleaning up the height of accessory structures to a maximum of 15 feet, and that was a request from the building department. So, that is a summary of the proposed amendments. And be appropriate to open the public hearing at this time, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that council may have afterwards.
Okay. We will now have a public hearing for PZTA 23-0002 for the zoning text amendments that the city planner just went through. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
Ready? Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I'm going to ask that you guys not vote on some of these things tonight, because I think this is all reading like hodgepodge. If we want to talk about, do we want our gas stations to be able to sell beer and wine and alcohol? I think we should vote on that, because the residents have told you they want to be able to go to their local gas station and buy what they want to consume and not have to go to the city of Detroit or outside of their community. But I think mixing this with the ice cube, I mean, with the ice machines outside fencing, it's just too much in these ordinances. I think you should take them one at a time. Now, what you should think about before you put this ice machine or ice chest stuff into place, we have a lot of gas stations that at one time, they were vacant, and inspiring entrepreneurs came to this city, and when they purchased those gas stations, they purchased those gas stations with ice machines on the outside. Now, I don't know how the city is notified in terms of when one owner sells and another owner buys. There's a miscommunication in terms of the sale of the gas station. So, if the people that are selling the gas station is not saying to the new potential owner that this was not on the site plan, or you have to get your site plan amended to be able to have this ice machine on the outside, even though the previous owner or the seller had his out there, and maybe he didn't get it approved. I think that if a gas station is keeping that area clean, it's not in the front door impeding people getting in and out, it's not impeding a person, say, being pushed in on a wheelchair to get to the front door, I think we should just leave it alone and let it be. We've got other things in this city that we're trying to worry about and be really concerned about. So, I'm going to ask that you just vote on one of these, and that's to permit the sale of alcohol to gas stations, and take each one of these other individual things, one at a time, and explain them to the public, because it just all look like words and hodgepodge and words on the screen. But I do like the idea of having what we're voting on, or what you guys are voting on, on the screen for the residents to see. So, only vote for the one thing.
This is a public hearing for PZTA 23-0002, zoning text amendments.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Sam Bacall. I own a business on 13 Mile and Greenfield, been there for 28 years. Address is 30835 Greenfield Road, Southfield. We have a gas station, we've been there for 28 years. I guess we are, as business owners, we are recognized as convenient locations with extended hours, variety of merchandise, and very importantly, clean public restrooms. We have and continue to evolve in the ever-changing business world. People's needs, lifestyles change. I think alcohol is a very important addition to our business. As gas stations continue to lose volume of gasoline sales, because people are staying home, working out of the house, and with the EV vehicles coming in, we need to invest in the future so we can bring EV chargers to our stations. So, it's looking down the future, we have to have additional items, additional revenue, so we can survive, so we can face the future without having our places run down and not being able to afford, or we can face investment for the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Thierry Hockenhaw, 24632 Pierce Street, 48075. And I'm just standing to agree concerning the gas stations of selling liquor. I personally don't drink, but I do fully agree that whatever people want to come into the gas station and purchase, that they should be able to. And I personally just frequent our gas station on 10 Mile and Greenfield, and the owners there are very thorough, disciplined with their employees. I've been going there for years, and when other cases happen, they know how to handle themselves. So, it's not a dangerous or creating hostile environment there. So, I'm in agreeance with the gas station selling liquor.
Thank you.
I'm Earl Crum, 27126 Pierce, Southfield, Michigan, 48076. I believe that gas stations are for providing gasoline for vehicles, and I approve them selling snacks, but alcoholic beverages. Are there party stores nearby? That's what party stores are for. So, I don't agree with the selling of alcohol at gas stations. And I concur with Pamela Gerald in terms of voting on one item and not mixing them all together. Thank you.
Yolanda Haynes, I spoke earlier about my address. Again, this is about supporting small businesses, and I think we need to look at the fact that these are viable businesses that are going through some changes. We're talking about now gas. I heard from a dealership that in 2025, we're going to switch to electric. So, what's going to happen with the gas? What are these dealers going to have to do? That's going to be a big transition and major. So, again, we're talking about small businesses, and we're also talking about adults over the age of 21, making a choice and a decision, a decision where to purchase the products that they would like to purchase. Again, we're talking about keeping money in Southfield and in Oakland County. Those are the things that we really need to consider, and it's not that people are not going to buy them. I'll give you a good example. Tinning Telegraph is a big spot. If I have to go a mile further left or right, that's going to cost me more gas, more time, and possibly more stress, not just me or any other individual. I'm just making a point here that this is about supporting small businesses, and we need to look at that more importantly. Thank you.
This is a public hearing for PZTA 23-0002, council-initiated zoning text amendments. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Counsel, you have questions? Councilman Hoag?
Yes, to the planner. Can you show the pictures of the ice chests? And at the top, you're saying that those are non-compliant?
That's correct. Actually, in 2018, the council passed ordinance that said there should be no exterior sales of any kind. These are examples of ice chests that aren't accessible and are possibly blocking accessible routes to the entrance of the store.
Okay, so, I remember this, you know, being of discussion for years, and I must say, I disagree with having ice chests outside to be non-compliant, because it's convenient for the customers. Just a week ago, I was at the gas station at 12 and Telegraph, and it was nowhere near the door, it was outside, and the customer actually asked the owner for assistance. Imagine if it was in the store, it would be a longer walk for the customer. So, I hate that we are... So I hate that we are, I could see if it's like right in the door, but it's not. If it's, if it's not in the the parking spots and it's just convenient when you're getting ice to be able to grab it and put it in your car. And I have to admit, nowhere do I go in any other community where, as a matter of fact, the the owners even trust you to purchase it, go go ahead, get your ice, put it in the car and keep going. And um I just have never agreed with this council. Even before my seat here is, I just, as long as it's clear, it's not obstructing the entrance or parking lots or handicap spaces or anything. I just don't feel, why are we even stepping into this? I I I know the gas station that I only frequent, it's not in the way. It's it's perfect, it's outside, you pull up, get, it's even on the other side of the 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 gas uh nozzles. And so it's it's just perfectly located. And so I, and I must admit too that I I don't like seeing this bundled up. If this one was out and then maybe talk about it a little bit further. But um I just wanna state that I I just hate that we are making that to be uh non-compliant if it's outside because I I agree with it as a customer if I needed it, that's all.
Could could I respond if you don't mind? So I I wanna go back to the history. Most of these gas stations at one time did um service, like oil changes and tire changes and so forth. So the ordinance was originally designed that the gas stations that have automobile service could sell automobile-related items outside only during hours of operation. That's windshield fluid, wipers, snow brushes and so forth. Over time, two things have happened. Fewer and fewer actually do automotive repair. I I believe we only have two stations in the, out of the thirty-seven that actually do automotive repair. And ex- exterior convenience items have grown to the point where uh you can get cords of wood that are outside in front of the gas station. I've seen T-shirts, I've seen beach chairs, beach balls, um all kinds of other things, including ice chests. So um based on the community appearance uh and other issues with blocking accessibility and the cluttering, council passed no exterior convenience items which included ice chests. Then we revisit this after COVID because we we took a pause on the enforcement. At the same time, um council directed us to come up with some ordinances to allow for beer, liquor and wine. There was some discussion even on council that if um if you don't have room for an ice chest on the inside, but all of a sudden you're gonna have room for beer, liquor and wine, we don't wanna start seeing it creep again and you selling stuff on the exterior. So what we were trying to find is a balance, crafting an ordinance that allow for beer, liquor and wine, but also to clean up um the sale of exterior convenience. Based on some of the arguments that you made, there is a provision that if you can meet the test of barrier-free and and not um impede parking or sight, there's a process for gas stations to be able to can allow um the continued allowing selling of ice on the outside. But they have to go through an administrative review process to make sure that the issues that we're concerned about aren't um being violated. So um we've tried to find a delicate balance for allowing beer, liquor and wine. Those cases, no exterior sales of any kind. If a gas station and some of the smaller ones may not have the ability or room to sell beer, liquor and wine, or to be able to pay for a fifty thousand or a hundred thousand dollar license, they can continue to sell ice on the exterior if they meet several tests of of which I I talked about, barrier-free compliance. I've even anecdotally mentioned many times going late at night to try to get some ice out of one of those older models and virtually almost have to climb in to get the bag of ice at the bottom. If I were in a wheelchair or had another disability, I'm uh I'm not sure that I would be able to get the ice out myself. And so the interior ones are are ADA compliant. But if if a store owner, a gas station owner, is able to meet our requirements, they can continue to sell ice on the on the outside, but only only ice and no other exterior items.
Okay, and I would agree with that, as I stated, as long as it doesn't block handicap parking or if it's accessible. And I would um agree with all the other items that you mentioned, no chairs or whatever, but this just seems like an overkill, but as long as it, I guess, then meet those requirements.
Yeah, so there is an exception, but they still have to meet those tests.
Okay. Um and then outside of that, relative to the other part, maybe the main part for which residents and the community are here for, um I personally have found that those um gas stations that do sell liquor and beer, they seem to be in better condition than the liquor stores, to be honest. They're cleaner, they're they're quick in and out. So um like I said, the ones that I've seen here in Southfield are immaculate as far as the cleaning and and the service that you get and all. So I definitely would be in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Councilman Banks?
Thank you. And to the planner, thank you for um including the exterior ice chests um with certain stipulations. I was glad to also see that in the ordinance. However, um I'm not sure if I read this right, but if a gas station has liquor, they are not allowed to have ice on the outside?
That's correct.
There's two separate sections here, did I read that correctly?
That's correct. And I I did meet with representatives from the gas station lobby early in the process and often to talk about some trade-offs. To um be able to sell beer, liquor and wine on the inside, um they'll have to forego having any exterior convenience items on the outside of their station. If they choose not to sell beer, liquor and wine, they can continue to sell ice on the exterior if they meet all of our regulations. And again, the argument was made in the past that we don't have enough room on the interior, we have to sell all these things on the outside. Um and uh I I know that at least one council person said, well, that argument doesn't hold water uh if you're gonna make room for beer or liquor and wine. We don't wanna see all these items coming out and being sold on the outside. So I, again, I tried to find a compromise, allowing people to continue to sell ice outside or allowing them to sell beer, liquor and wine, but not both. And again, there, an argument can be made, if you if you allow me to sell ice, why can't I sell all these other products? And that's what we've had in the past is continuing code enforcement with people, um retailers selling all kinds of products on the outside. Uh I've previously talked to council about the change of the business model. Uh now, convenience items are at least equal or greater than what gas station sales are for their overall revenue, and that's gonna continue to change as we move more and more towards electric vehicles. And at some point, I see the pumps going away, the canopies going away, and these becoming no no different than a neighborhood convenience store. So I'm trying to look at the the current conditions and and look for the future and come up with regulations that try to find a compromise and and please everybody at the same time.
And and I respect what you said. Um I'm just trying to understand, there's a new section that defines ice chests. And it's pretty specific. What does the indoor sales have to do with that? I I mean, it's kinda like saying, I mean, I don't understand why, just because they may have liquor on the inside, they can't have ice on the outside.
Well, again, it's 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 about um trying to reduce the amount of items that are, have been in the past, uh sold on the exterior and compromising, I'm hearing council and I'm hearing the residents about the need to have ice chests on the outside and trying to find a balance.
Well, I I agree with all the other items, removing them because, you know, it tends to look sloppy. But if they meet the qualifications for an exterior ice chest, whether they have beer, wine, alcohol, or they don't, it's either they meet it or they don't. That's just my personal feeling, so. Um and then also with reference to the, um, how many gas stations do we have in Southfield?
Approximately thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
With two that have been approved by council.
How many of the gas stations would qualify to have um beer, wine, liquor in it?
Well, all of them can qualify if the proprietor is willing to buy the license and make the room to sell. So we're not restricting, we're not restricting uh any gas station from selling beer, wine and liquor. Some gas station owners, and again, talking to representatives, has said that not every gas station owner, especially some of the smaller ones, will have the ability to sell beer, liquor and wine either because of the cost of the license or the amount of space that they have in in the interior. S- some of the um attendant booths or or stores are no more than um being able to sell lotto tickets and and gum and candy. So they're not large enough to be able to do that. So they may choose not to sell beer, liquor and wine. But there's no prohibition, there's no limitation, there's no separation for any gas station from selling beer, liquor and wine.
Um and when we first started um researching this, weren't we going to say it had to be X number of square feet? And had to be so far from, example, a party store, you can't?
Well, I I included a map.
And you're saying we're no longer requiring any of that?
Well, I, that that may have been discussed, but that was not the direction that I re- must need a new battery and I apologize. But um if you look at where the parties, I I'm sorry, this is being temperamental. So all the triangles up there represent party liquor stores. And you can see their proximity to uh gas stations. There is never, there was never a discussion that I am aware of or direction that said if um they have to be separated from party liquor stores or we only want a certain amount. Uh the direction was come up with regulations to allow gas stations to sell beer, liquor and wine. And we also wanted to deal with the exterior convenience items and we still want ice chests to be allowed under certain circumstances. So that could, I mean, that's an approach that council could take that would limit uh in many cases, the number of gas stations that would be allowed to sell if there was a separation um between party stores and gas station selling. But we don't regulate beer, liquor and wine sales at any of the party stores or grocery stores. We don't have a separation. And one thing that I talked with uh City Attorney Dawn is being consistent with our regulations. And so since we don't regulate the separation of liquor sales at any other type of facility, we weren't going to regulate or separate between gas station sales and other liquor, wine and beer sales.
If I may through the chair?
Yes.
So with the liquor license for the gas stations, which are off-premise, there are two, there's, uh well, actually, for those that are gonna have the spirits, it's a specially designated distributor. So while that license does not require your approval, they still have to go through the Michigan Liquor Control Commission and there is a quota for those um based on population, just like our on-premise. So those that uh want to sell the beer, yeah, excuse me, beer, liquor and wine, which is your SDD off-premises, when they go to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, um there is a quota. And if the quota has been, you know, matched, there's some waivers and the waivers if the um merchants within two miles, not more than two miles within, another one. So there's, Michigan Liquor Control Commission uses, but there's a quota for these also. And we will have a presentation by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission at Legislative on Wednesday, so I can even share more information if not sooner. But so there is a quota, so we we're allowing it, but when they apply for that license that they get from the state, the state is still going to um allow them to get it based on the quota for this city. And I think it's every three thousand, um there's a fraction, so they look at every three thousand, but there is a quota, so.
And I was gonna say, do you know what the quota is for Southfield?
No, not right off the top of my head, but I can get that information.
Thank you.
If I could, just using simple math, if um City Attorney Dawn is saying one per three thousand, we have roughly seventy-five to eighty thousand pe- persons here. So somewhere between twenty-five and twenty-seven um permits or licenses could be issued.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Yes, um I have a couple of questions. One of them is sort of asked by Councilwoman Banks, but I'm gonna ask it in a different way. Is there a distance requirement for gas stations to not be able to, or anyone not to be able to sell liquor close to either church, school or anything? Would any of these restrictions, if there are any, uh eliminate some stations from selling?
Only if there's restrictions by the state licensing, but not in our zoning.
So if the gas station is right next door to a elementary school, they could sell liquor?
According to our zoning, I don't know what the state licensing says about that.
No, but our own, our own zoning.
We 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 don't have that as a um a requirement, as any separation. Again, I I could put that in there based on other um uses that we've, similar to marijuana uses, but that would, uh we'd have to do analysis, but that would probably knock out the majority of of the the stations.
Be interesting to know what the result would be if there is a study done to see if it's gonna restrict that or not. And I'm not particularly uh petitioning to not have gas stations sell alcohol or liquor, but I do think one of our responsibilities as a council, as a deciding group, that we pay attention to curb appeal. And it would seem to me that we should have learned our lesson about dollar stores, uh overpopulation of dollar stores. So we have liquor stores, gas stations, uh grocery stores, all selling liquor one after another. Uh we're not, I think we're working against our desires to have a good curb appeal. But someone from an outside city coming into city of Southfield, driving down the street saying, wow, sure is a lot of liquor stores around this place. And the uh, and that moves into my other question is, is there a restriction on advertising for alcohol and liquor? Do we have that in our our requirements for gas stations to uh sell liquor and and beer and wine?
Not in our zoning. I don't know if there's any other um ordinance requirements dealing with that or licensing. That was not an issue that was brought up for me to look into.
Well, should we? I mean, we're all a a team supposedly, trying to make a healthy Southfield, but also one with curb appeal that would attract someone from another location to come to Southfield to either work or or live. And if we put impediments in the way of those people making decision, are we making the right decision to do all these things? If we're not even looking at it. And it's an unanswered question right now because nobody's studied it, but it is a question. But it is a question I put on the table to ask somebody to take a look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Mr. Frazier's cousin drove up some questions. With respect to also housing communities and peer citizens, did you take a look at what they are doing with respect to service stations and at-home services?
Again, I'd be happy to answer all these questions. My direction was to come up with and allow beer, liquor, and wine sales at gas stations. I believe it was brought up that only two other communities in Oakland County prohibit the sale of gas, beer, and wine at their gas stations. So, if you would want to postpone, take any action on this, I'll take it back, and we'll study all these questions that are coming up. I would have been better prepared had these questions come up earlier. We've been going through this process for several months now. And if it's the desire of council to take a pause, I'd be happy to come up with, we'll use consistent separation regulations, and I'll let you know how many gas stations potentially could be eligible. I do know that we were one of, only a few communities that prohibited the sale of alcohol, beer, and wine at our gas stations. My direction was to come up with an ordinance to allow them. So, if you want to take a pause and postpone this to a date certain, we'd be happy to come back, try to answer some of these questions.
Oh, and, you know, I'm not necessarily, and I thought we had required in a certain, you know... And I'm not sure where this is going to end up tonight, but I do, it has come up before in the past. What are the thoughts or not published apart? Have we gotten feedback from them? I know I've asked this question before when this has come up. Over the last couple of years, I think we had the county executive come in here, made, put a presentation to us. And I did specifically ask what was the input from our law enforcement on this issue. So, I'm not saying this to put a stop to anything, but those who seem to me to be systemic kind of questions, that would be answered.
Right. Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes, some of the questions that have come up tonight has been answered. For the police report, we have received one from our own esteemed chief, Police Chief Elvin Baron. He did say that he did not have any issues or problems with it. And I know from the other neighboring cities that when we follow the state regulations, they do a lot of controlling the licensings and how far apart, how many, and all of those kinds of things. Those things are already in place, and as we see from our neighboring cities, there's not a lot of issues that we've heard of, the ones that's really close to us, like Berkeley, Oak Park, Farmington, where these gas stations are already allowed to do this. This, for me, is more of a convenience for the residents. As they spoke and came forward, they're saying that they want to spend their dollars on things that is convenient for them in our city. And right now, we're one of the few cities that doesn't allow that. So, they're going to the other cities to do it. But I understand the concerns, but I do believe those concerns have been addressed prior, because we've been talking about this for a while. But if you need more answers, I believe documentation was presented to us from our police chief. I know he did a report and sent it to the entire council. And I know that the state also, if we follow their laws, most of the cities, and I know all of the gas stations have to follow their, anybody that gets a license, they have to follow the regulations of LARA. So, I'm comfortable with what we're doing.
No, I agree a hundred percent. My question, in essence, was a softball question, because I felt these things had been answered. And I, personally, I spoke to the chief about this. And I got this personally interviewed, so it was a softball question, just a clarification that was intent of my inquiry to elevate this to the level that is known. So, I'm, I agree a hundred percent.
All right. Mr. Grant, I did have a question as well. Just, I want to make sure I understand this correctly. In the new section regarding the exterior ice chests, if... So, we talked that if they have beer and wine, and beer, wine, liquor, they could have administrative site plan review, but they're still not allowed to have the exterior ice chests? Or they are, if they meet certain conditions?
When we did our preliminary discussion, at least I heard the consensus was, I could have changed, or I could have misheard, that you still wanted, in certain scenarios, ice chest exterior sales, but that there was going to be a trade-off, that if beer, liquor, and wine were going to be sold, no exterior sales of any kind, including ice chests. Those stations that choose not to sell beer, liquor, and wine could continue to sell exterior ice chest if they meet the requirements, and they don't impede barrier-free access. The chests themselves are accessible, they don't take away required parking, they don't block corner clearance, and so forth.
Okay. So, in one of the conditions that I'm reading has within 500 feet from the property line of any lot used or zoned for residential purposes. So, if a gas station gets approved to sell beer or wine or any type of alcoholic beverages, they still will not be able to have the exterior ice chests if they're within 500 feet of a residential neighborhood? Is that, am I reading that correctly?
I don't think so, but I guess the simplest thing is that if council wants to allow beer, liquor, and wine sales and allow ice chests, that I'll have to rework this ordinance and put the provisions that we had in place for stations that don't sell beer, liquor, and wine.
Because the provisions that we have now...
Right now, I can tell you that in 2018, councils said we have to deal with all these exterior sales. Code enforcement was here about, I don't know, only 25 or 30% of gas stations were in compliance. There was an issue with curb appeal. And we amended the ordinance at the end of 2018 to say no exterior sales of any kind, including ice chests. And then, right around 2018, 2019, there was a grace period that was granted, and then COVID hit. And we laxed enforcement across the board to help local businesses. And then, when the pandemic was lifted, code enforcement started to enforce what was on the books. And then, there was some backlash. And I think that's what came to the forefront, where council said, I think we need to deal with this in more of a comprehensive way. And at the same time, council had said, let's be open to the sale of beer, liquor, and wine. We had a discussion about tying these all together. They seemed to overlap with each other. We're dealing with gas stations that had a number of issues. And that's how we created these regulations. And if that's changed, which is fine, council's directive, then I'll have to rework, I'll have to rework the regulations and...
Okay, so you did clarify something for me. So, my question is though, so it does read though, exterior ice chests shall not be permitted within 500 feet from a property line for residential purposes. Many gas stations are usually within a neighborhood. So, even if they don't have beer and wine, they still could not have the exterior ice chests if they're within, I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly.
Yeah, and again, if that's a requirement that you want stricken specifically, we could do that. But it was, is probably based on, if you... Council President, can you tell me which specific section?
It's section, it's the new section, Chapter 45, Article 4, 5.28-2, exterior ice chests. It's between, so 1A and then A3. So, the top of, bottom of Page 2, top of Page 3 in our packet.
Mr. President, I read that as just saying that 500-foot designation is just for ice chests, period. It has nothing to do with the selling liquor.
Correct, yes. I did make that distinction after the explanation from the planner. But then, I think about gas stations that, even if they're not selling any type of alcoholic beverages...
That doesn't make sense.
Many are within, I'm thinking of the ones in my neighborhood, there's homes right behind them. So, to me, that doesn't make sense that we would have 500 feet away just to limit the ice chests. That's where I was confused.
So, we're talking about 1A2?
1...
A2.
1A3.
Three, three, three.
Does council following me on that?
I agree with you. I understand.
We can, with your direction, if you wanted to move forward, it could be conditioned to strike that requirement, that specific requirement of the 500-foot property line separation?
I'm fine with the other ones, being away from a driveway and a sidewalk.
Yeah, within the 50 feet of driveway and within less than 10 feet from a public right-of-way or sidewalk. And there probably was some precedent why it was written exactly that way from some other. But that does limit where they could be located, so.
So, I will, I'll ask my colleagues what they think, but I think Councilwoman Hoag has a question.
Well, I was going to say, if we're willing to fix that, I mean, I guess what I'm asking, can we still approve, because I don't want to hold this up for the business owners, but could we proceed with, and then saying, but fixing this particular language? Is that possible?
If you can move forward on this, and you could direct that one of the conditions is the elimination of this 500-foot separation?
Okay, and...
Would we be open, another change would be that if a station gets a liquor license or alcoholic, however, the ability to sell, that they also can have an ice chest outside if it meets the requirements? I think that should be another change.
If that's the direction of council, I can make that happen.
Okay, so we can, we'll ask council, are there any other changes that council would want? Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, it's not necessarily a change, but I'm just thinking as, I'm standing here, listening to our arguments, and that is, this could be an academic discussion that we're having, because on Wednesday, the Liquor Control Commission is going to be at the Legislative Committee meeting. All these questions could get answered then. So, so we, I don't know. I'm not against the sale of liquor and beer, and even though I don't drink, in gas stations. But I just want our curb appeal to be good. I also want us to not write an ordinance and then ignore it, because it's convenient to ignore it, so.
And I thought, for my clarification, that the meeting from Legislative was not aimed at gas stations, but just the general liquor licenses that we have for restaurants, establishments?
So, when you're here, we can ask the question.
Okay. Councilwoman Banks?
I would be fine moving forward with the two changes, with the ice chests allowed on the outside of any and all stations, providing they meet the requirements as outlined. And then, also, the 500-foot section?
All right. Council, are you, we've heard from Councilwoman Frazier, Councilwoman Banks, Councilwoman Hoag, any other, is anyone, is, are we, do we want to move forward with those two changes? Or do you prefer to wait?
We can move forward.
One thing I could add, just for your consideration. You're going to be approving and introducing the ordinance tonight. You won't be enacting it till the next meeting. We can try to come up with regulations before you actually enact it. So, they're not going to take effect tomorrow.
Correct. Okay, so, just to clarify for council and those who are watching, we will be taking out the 500 feet from a property line as a requirement not to have an ice chest, as well as allowing ice chests for those gas stations that will be selling alcohol to meet certain requirements in order to have an ice chest. Provided, it will be through the city planner, we'll have certain restrictions.
It'll, through the chair, it'll be the same regulations, except for the 500-foot separation. They still would have to meet the same regulations as...
Okay.
We'll just have to rework, work the ordinance.
All right. Council, any other questions, comments? Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move the approval of PZTA 23-0002, which is the council-initiated zoning ordinance text amendments, with the added amendment to eliminate the 500-foot separation piece that's there in 1.83. And also to amend that if a gas station does sell liquor, that they go through the administrative review process for the selling of the ice chest if they meet all requirements.
Support.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve PZTA 23-0002, the council-initiated zoning ordinance text amendment with the two changes that we've discussed.
Clarification?
Yes.
And to the planner, we basically are saying all gas stations will be allowed to have an ice machine on the exterior, providing they meet the qualifications as outlined. We're not going to separate liquor versus planning. It's all gas stations under one umbrella, correct?
Right.
Okay.
With the provision of the 500-foot separation being eliminated.
Okay, I just want a clarification on that, please. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Through the chair, we need to introduce ordinance number 1774.
Mr. President?
Oops, go ahead.
Yes. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 1774.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Frazier, to introduce ordinance number 1774. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Through the chair, can I just ask who supported that motion?
The ordinance?
Yes.
Councilman Frazier.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Planner, thank you very much for your hard work on these text amendments. I know that they are tricky.
Okay, thank you.
I did have one question, though.
Sure.
Because we were talking, not ice chests, but we were talking about barrier-free and everything else. We had a lengthy discussion a while back about the donation bins, the clothing donation bins. Do you have an update or what we plan to do? I know code enforcement was going through who had permission, because they do take up parking spaces.
Yeah, so, I will come back with the report, because Ms. Malali and I were talking about this after following up with the codes. We had an unofficial policy. Again, these regulations that we came up with, ice chests, are very similar to the clothing donation. But many times, these donation boxes are just showing up even without the property owner's permission. And they are taking away required parking, or they are blocking. And many of them appear to be going for... many of them appear to be going for not-for-profit, but they're actually being, clothes are being sold to third, third world countries for profit, and so they, they have, you know, kind of been almost like a weed that came in, and so I know we, I've been working with the codes department, we've had a policy prior to, and we utilize that policy to come up with these standards for the ice chests. I can't tell you exactly where we are with the regulatory part of it, but I will ask Ms. Beeks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, one other.
Yes.
So people, gas station owners will come back for an administrative review, correct?
So I'll be clear, the beer, liquor, and wine require special land use, so there's a special land use process, now that we have it on the books, and that will require public hearing to get input from all adjacent neighbors. As far as the ice chests, that can be done administratively once this is enacted.
So I'm just wondering if we can have a review of the perpetual maintenance agreement for these gas stations?
In what way?
Well, as I've said all along, some of the, there are many that are fine, there are a number of stations that are very tired, and they need to clean it up.
Okay, I, when you said perpetual, we have site maintenance agreement that is required to be filed and recorded with the county, so that in the future, if the site plan's approved, then they're not following through, but to your point, if, if a building pre-existed site plan approval wasn't dealt with, and there might be some maintenance issues on the building itself, is that's what you want us to look at?
Yeah, I want to see some, some better landscaping at some of these stations.
So what we, what we always try to do is when, whether it's administrative site plan or site plan, we'll do a special inspection to see if they're in compliance with, or either what was previously approved or today, and try to compel them to bring up their standards.
Yeah, take some of that beer money and spend it on some flowers and bushes.
Okay. Councilman Brightwell?
Mr. Planner, respect to the colored boxes that are popping up like weeds, my problem with all of them, they're not upright, they're uncycled, and they become like gummy grounds. Can we, did you go through whatever process here, can we include, see something there that indicate that those boxes should be routinely or scheduled emptying process or something, because they're definitely uncycled, someone has to be responsible for that, and all they would not exist?
Well, again, they've never been permitted, they're not part of site plan approval, they haven't been officially permitted, they just show up, and then unfortunately it falls on the codes department for making sure that they're being complied with. So I, I have a note, I will follow up with Ms. Beeks, we'll see where they are with the enforcement of that, but I've been told by some property owners that they never gave permission for those to show up, they just show up some, at night or on a weekend, and then they, then you get one, and then you get two and more. This was part of what we were trying to eliminate, is any exterior accessory items that weren't permitted as part of a site plan.
Okay, well, given that we talk to code, determine what the action from us to authorize them, to, you know, there, we just get, whatever, pick it up and throw it away, because it's not, it's not permitted anyway, so if they stay there, maybe we also actually move it and take it to the lab, you know, whatever, I have a way to approach it, to dispose of it.
I think that's also a legal issue I have to discuss with Ms. King. That may also be a legal issue we'll have to discuss with Ms. King about going on private property and removing, removing them.
Okay, well, whatever, spell, leave me.
Yeah, I, we'll come back, we'll come back at a future date and report.
Okay, thank you. Next, we're moving to the agenda items for discussion and our action, and the first is two-nine-three-one-zero Telegraph Road Change of Use.
Yes, this is also my item. As, as we have done in the past, most recently with McAllister Rental, whenever, whenever there's a significant change or potential use that is different, we like to bring it to Council for discussion purposes only. The petitioner is Matic Auto, the property is located at two-nine-one-three-zero Telegraph Road, on the east side of Telegraph, between twelve and thirteen mile roads. Existing zoning is B-three general business and P vehicular parking. The current use is Matic Buick GMC, they're looking at redeveloping an area in the vacant northern building and parking lot, I believe that building was used car sales at one point, or had a Mitsubishi dealership, and the proposed conditional use is an automated dual car wash to serve the dealership and the public. Now, if, if Council, if there's consensus to allow for a conditional zoning special use and site plan, they will go through the process, and you'll see this item back in, in approximately three months or so. So again, Ariel is a former dealership, the majority of the property is zone B-three, the upper portion, northern portion is zone vehicular parking, and they like to be able to build a freestanding auto wash business to support their current dealership, as well as to be open to the public, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to their representatives, have them introduce themselves, briefly go through what their proposal is, and then be happy to answer any questions that Council may have.
Just before you begin, this, this car wash or auto wash proposal is where the parking is currently?
It's, it's partially where the, I think the used dealership building is, and the parking area that is current there, they want to use that for their vacuum cleaners, which would necessitate a rezoning change. To protect the neighbors and Council's concerns from just changing it to a B-three, we recommended a conditional use that would only allow that to be used for either parking or accessory to the car wash.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Yes, my name is Carl Zimmerman, I am the CEO, President, and Majority Shareholder of Matic Auto, I'm here with my team members here, a couple of my partners, Molly Williams, who is now the Dealer Principal of the new Matic Buick GMC, Mike Bailey, who was involved in taking the former vacant American Cancer Society Building and putting the MVP Veterinary Partners into that facility, and Shane Burley from the award-winning architectural firm of Studio Detroit. So we are very excited to be the new owners of what was Art Moran Buick GMC, we purchased that in February, along with that building, we bought the former Mitsubishi facility, that brand no longer exists, that, or at least at that facility, that was sold away, and again, there is that empty parking lot next to the former Mitsubishi store. That Mitsubishi building has been deemed to be obsolete by a city authorized third-party assessor, and so we have an affidavit deeming that as obsolete. We have looked at a number of uses for that location, and really found no practical use for that, for a variety of reasons, certainly none that are compatible with the dealership or helpful to us. That former Mitsubishi store does have a operating rollover car wash that the dealership uses, but given that the facility is now obsolete, we, what we would like to do, the proposal is for us to replicate the formula for success that we have executed in Redford, we have, and I should maybe explain Matic Automotive, not to brag necessarily, but to know who you are dealing with, Matic Automotive, we operate dealerships in Macomb, Oakland County, and Wayne County, we have four brands, Chevrolet, which we are the nine-time Chevrolet Dealer of the Year Award winner, we have been named by Automotive News as a hundred best dealership to work for, and the Free Press has deemed us a number of times in three consecutive years to be one of the top places to work. So the car wash that we built in Redford, similarly, has been honored by the readers of Our Magazine as the best single dealership, I'm sorry, car wash in the city, the Metro Detroit area, and so we have some pictures, if I can figure out quite how to operate this, show you our proof of concept, and what has worked so beautifully in Redford, so that in the background you can see the Chevrolet dealership, and this is Michigan's largest car wash. This is a little flyover animation of that facility. The facility that we are proposing for Southfield would be of a similar quality in terms of the materials used, the environmental conscientiousness, the products, state-of-the-art equipment, and great customer experience. Another part of the, this is called a premium express business model for the car wash, we offer free vacuums to all of our car wash customers, we use the unlimited car wash subscription model, and this is, we will not have this interior cleaning facility that we do have in Redford, but this is state-of-the-art, as you can see. Couple other things again to mention, obsolete Mitsubishi building, facility, property that is really unusable for any other practice, practical purpose, and this is something that helps us with the operation of the dealership and the major investment we have made into that facility. It has been brought up today about the convert, or the movement to the all-electrified future, and so the Buick GMC facility, we are going to need to reinvent ourselves in that facility as well. This car wash will give a great experience for the general public, but will also serve the needs of the dealership, including drawing people to the campus. This is an overview, you can see the, to the left is the vacuum center, which is parking only now, so it will still be parking, we'll just be vacuuming cars there, the car wash is right where the Mitsubishi facility is now, there's an overview of it. First-class materials, first-class landscaping, another view of it. And here's an animated flyover of the proposed wash. Separated for club members, plenty of queuing for cars, we are asking for no variances, we need no variances, we, our designs meet all of the requirements for setbacks, for height, for parking, and for queuing. So we are local to the area, we live, all of my partners live very close to this, this is the closest General Motors dealership to any of our homes, we work in the area, we live in the area, we have onsite ownership, Molly is there every day, I'm right down the street, back and forth down to Redford and over to Macomb. So that is the overview, welcome, any questions?
If I could just add that, again, this is just to get a consensus tonight, if Council is amenable to this change, they will submit a conditional rezoning, special land use and site plan. The other thing I will mention that's not clearly shown here is the existing parking lot is actually a little bit below grade with regard to the adjacent property, there's a wall six and a half feet tall and a berm that helps to reduce noise at this particular parking lot area, so on two sides, it has some built-in noise reduction already, but those are site plan issues, we'll come back at some future point if Council is amenable to considering this as an option.
Okay, Councilman Hoag?
Yes, I first just want to thank you, the Matic family organization has been around for years, I'm familiar with your location in Redford, I think it's a great establishment, I know plenty of people that live over there, it's not a nuisance to the neighborhood, it looks great, and I've used it myself, and each time it's, it's been just a good experience and not a lot of traffic, because it's, it's huge, and it's a good thing, so I welcome that to Southfield, and I'm glad that you're bringing that to us, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you, the plan presented to us is beautiful. The other location, is that School Craft and Telegraph?
Correct.
Okay, because that is a nice-looking location, and you've really kept that corner up for as long as you've been there.
Thank you.
I've never been through one of your drive-throughs, but is this exterior wash only, you mentioned club plan, will that also include interior vacuuming, et cetera?
We will do no interior cleaning, it is self-serve, free vacuums. The club membership is for the unlimited monthly subscription.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
That's okay.
Okay. Councilman Frazier?
Will you be hiring more people to run this, or is it so modern that it's doing by itself?
It is highly automated, but we will be hiring a number of additional people. We will be working seven days a week, the hours will generally be the same as the dealerships, except for Sunday, but, so we will need additional people, and it certainly will support the jobs and hopefully increase the amount of employment we have at the Buick GMC store as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, can non-GM vehicles use the car wash?
Yes.
All right.
Hundred percent.
An extra price.
Yeah, you know, the video is very nice, it would have been nice to go through the car wash as well, maybe for the next video, but this, you know, this, this property is very distressed, it's, I'm glad that you're looking at revitalizing this area as well. It's very nice. I did have a serious question, though, as it relates to the building, you mentioned that the building's considered obsolete.
Yes, sir.
Does that mean that when you come back for this building, you're going to be asking for brownfield or some other incentives?
As a matter of fact, yes, we were encouraged initially as we first approached the administration to talk about this plan, and we have actually done a brownfield project in Redford, likewise there, we were approached by the township, and they suggested that we do that, so we have some experience with it, and we would like to make use of those, those credits in support of, it allows us to do the very best we can here with the investment.
Okay, thank you. Council, any other?
I do have one other question.
Sure.
And that is, in this area, a number of years ago, we had a real problem with loudspeakers, when people were calling their employees that were out in the outside, and it was disturbing the neighbors, and we went through quite a, quite a long time before we got it sort of straightened out. Will you be using any kind of loudspeakers or anything?
No, sir, we find that's inconvenient and a disruption to the work operation and to our customers and the neighbors, of course, so, in fact, at the other car wash, we have requested, we have signs asking customers to make sure they're not turning their radios on, sometimes people want to play their radios loudly out of their car, and we discourage that and ask people not to do that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Brightwell?
What is the, you know, I see a proliferation of car washes in the last year or so, and I understand that the business model is pretty much changing, so what, what is driving your steps to get into this, this market of car wash?
So our motivation is really different, I think, from a lot of the phenomena that is, exists in the industry, so for us, in Redford, we did not have an automated car wash, we knew the technology was available, we always had a dilapidated Goodyear facility that was next to us where the car wash now is, so for decades, I had a dream to put a car wash there, just because it was good for our customers, it drew more people to the campus, we like to have people come every three months for an oil change, now we get people coming every week for a car wash, so that was always a vision of ours, it was a complimentary opportunity, and we had the space right next to us. This, it turns out, is a similar situation, where we have a piece of property that really is not very, it's, there's really no other good option for it, and it works out great for us. To your question about why that is happening in our area, in this, in the Detroit area, the three-dollar car washes that proliferated for a long time, there was a there, there was a race to the bottom in terms of pricing and it drew a lot of, it took a lot of car washes out of business because they couldn't compete on price. And so our market is very unique in southeast Michigan where we have all this opportunity for these new car washes with this new business model, with the additional new technology and environmentally safety, safe practices to mirror really what's gone on around the rest of the country. Around the rest of the country, you go and there's beautiful new car washes all over. And so Detroit actually is just kind of an interesting situation where there's a great opportunity. It's drawing a lot of investors into the market, but that's, that's different than our situation here. At least in terms of motivation.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Had another question. Most dealerships already have a car wash on premises, you know, after an oil change. Is there currently a car wash on premises and will that be replaced with this one?
It will be replaced. There is one in the back, the former Mitsubishi store. And it's a very kind of inefficient, older, high, low-quality, slow process where just the car is stationary, it rolls over and then we have a lot of hand cleanup to do after the fact.
Okay. And then in your, in your presentation, you showed the Redford location had the vacuums inside. Is that, to me, you know, Michigan winters, if you want to vacuum your car.
So we have both. That interior cleaning area is for detailing vehicles.
But it won't be available to the public?
So in Redford, we do have that. In Southfield, we will not. We will only have the do-it-yourself, free vacuums outside.
Okay.
Primarily because we just don't have the space here to do what we did in Redford.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Crowe?
Yeah, if, it sounds like there's a consensus to move forward and we'll work with the applicant petitioner to fill out the proper applications for the conditional zoning, special land use and site plan. And you'll probably see that in a couple of months.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have the Beechwood Log Jam Project receipt of bids.
Good evening. I'm Brandy Slachek, the city's stormwater manager. And I'm here to ask council for approval to award a construction contract for the removal of a large log jam on the southwest corner of the Beechwoods Park property. This log jam was caused by fallen trees and natural debris and is causing major erosion to some of the stream banks along that area to also adjacent properties as well. So the removal of this log jam would improve habitat for fish and wildlife and would also reduce erosion to the properties. Purchasing received bids for this project last week. We only received one bid, but from a very, a company that was as well-respected and they were underbid. The company is T.R. Piperzec of China, Michigan. Hubbell Rothen Clark is the engineer on the project and their project engineers recommended, reviewed the bid and recommended award to this company. The total cost of the project is $38,795. Funds for this project were originally budgeted in the Stormwater Management Contractual Professional Account in fiscal year 2023. So we are asking to fund this project through a draw on that fund balance. And as you can see, there's a picture up here of the log jam that was taken earlier this spring. And the location of the log jam itself is on that Beechwoods property in the very southeast corner of the property, kind of where the river makes a bend, turn there. So it collects a lot of debris in that area and it's been an issue for several years. So we get water back up in that area and causing erosion, actually causing the river to kind of reroute itself. So the need to remove this is pretty high as it's kind of coming up against those apartments there to the south. So we want to protect the stream banks there as well. So I have any, if you have any questions, can you answer them?
Counsel, any questions? The only question I have is, once we approve this, when will it be, when will the project start?
So it'd probably be late fall. We do need to probably get a permit through the state to remove some of these, to remove part of the log jam. So that process is, sometimes takes some time. So by the end of, and we are trying to do it in low water level. So some, actually, winter would be a good time to remove this as the ground is frozen there. So it's up to the contractor, but we, I think we had in the contract to have it done within the year.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, do you have any guess about how long it would take to clear the log jam?
Actually, this project will probably only take a couple of days. So as long as they get onsite, and I spoke with Parks and Rec and we have certain areas where we can place the logs within that Beechwoods area, you know, to provide habitat, so they don't have to remove the logs from the entire property. So it's a pretty short project, should be done within a couple of weeks.
Okay, will it create a fair amount of noise? Will it be sawing and chipping or whatever?
Yeah, probably for a couple of days there, it would be a pretty noisy. But we'll be working like during the daylight hours. And it may cause some issues with the, you know, the apartments to the south, but we can notify them of the project and kind of let them know what's going on.
Okay, it's not a demand or anything else, but it might be a suggestion that that would be to your advantage, I think, to send a note to the people that live in a, in the area that, when you get a date that
Sure.
for the next couple of days, we're going to be working to clear the log jam so that they aren't surprised by noise.
Right, yeah. And actually, to the south, that's pretty close to that work area. The other residents on Long Beach Road, they're pretty hidden back there. But definitely if things happen when we don't have the leaves on the trees, it can echo quite a bit, so we can send out letters and let them know.
Good note. Thank you.
Sure.
Counsel, any other questions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve the award for the construction contract for Beechwoods Park Project to Pipe Zrak of China, Michigan.
I didn't know how to pronounce it either. Piperzec.
Thank you. For an amount not to exceed $38,795 through a budget adjustment, also giving the mayor and the clerk the authorization to execute the documents on behalf of the city for this project.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilman Frazier, to approve the Beechwoods Log Jam Project as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up is a receipt of bids for Section 11 Water Main Linings.
As those of you who've been here for a while, you know that Section 11 is essentially our oldest water main and the city has been working very hard to replace the water main that's either old, undersized, or subject to breaks. Section 11 is all of those. So the city went out to bid, divided up the area of concern into five different divisions, received bids for it. The total bid amount was over eight million dollars, which was well beyond our ability. So we focused on the two areas, Division 2, which is Candlewood Lane, Keshe Street and Spring River Drive. And Division 4, which is South Gate Drive and Lone Elm Drive for water main lining. This is the most cost-effective, especially when dealing with lots of trees and other driveways and other approaches. The lowest bidder was Paymar Enterprises, which many of you know the city has used in the past. Their total bid was 1.2 million for Division 2 and $470,800 for Division 4, for a total of $1,714,116.82. The city had budgeted $2 million. If you use 25% for contingency and for engineering services, it comes out to approximately that much. There is money available in the water fund and we recommend the city council approve the contract with Paymar to do the work. Because of the timing of the bid and the timing of the opening, the contractor has asked if they could start after the beginning of the new year. That should not be a problem.
All right. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we authorize the mayor and the clerk to execute the construction documents between the city and Paymar Enterprises of New Haven, Michigan, as approved by the city attorney for the lining of water mains in Divisions 2 and 4 of Section 11 for an amount of total overall project of roughly 2.1 million. Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to approve the receipt of bids for the Section 11 Water Main Linings as presented. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries.
Last item I have for the city council is we had solicited bids for 15 different types of road repair and maintenance material and debris hauling services. We only received one bid response and that was from Ellsworth Industries, which is the current firm we use out of Plymouth, Michigan. The bid is for $227,060 and debris for the material, debris removal is $18.50 a ton. This is used with both the fire, all of public works facilities and parks and recreation. It's expected approximately $20,000 will be spent by the fire department and $5,000 for parks and recs. We ask the city approve a contract for those amounts with Ellsworth Trucking.
Counsel, any questions? Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Why is it, do you think, that we only received one bid on this?
We really don't produce enough that a larger firm, we really don't produce enough that a larger firm would want. Also, as you know, almost half the state of Michigan is under construction. So everybody who still exists past COVID has more than enough work. We were fortunate that Ellsworth was going to continue with us.
Thank you.
That was the exact same question that I had. But seeing that we have a sole, sole contractor, do you feel comfortable with this firm? And have we ever had any issues with performance with this firm?
We've not. In fact, they, since I've worked here, they seem to have bent over backwards for the city. They're here within a day of notice, even on special projects. They, they're very friendly, very responsive. So I wholeheartedly would recommend them.
Okay. Mr. Chair, is it time for a motion?
If there's no other questions, then yes.
Okay, well, I move that we approve the contract as presented.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the road material and debris removal services for the public works, Parks and Rec, and Fire Department. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Our last item under this portion of our meeting is the receipt of bids for the Twickenham Valley Road Improvement and Approval of Cost Participation Agreement for Oakland County Local Road Improvement Program.
Good evening. I'm city engineer Lee Schultz. The city has received five acceptable bids for the Twickenham Valley Road Improvements Project. The proposed project consists of reconstruction of several streets and asphalt with new concrete curbs and then concrete slab repairs on the other streets. It's about half and half, the two different types of improvements. The map does differentiate which streets are getting which treatment. The work is scheduled to start in September and the work will proceed into next year. Again, in the springtime, we'll have a winter shutdown. So to be completed in July of 2024. And when completed, this project will improve 2.8 miles of local roads. Our acceptable low bid of $3,438,700 was submitted by Proline Asphalt Paving. The total cost of the project, including construction engineering and contingencies, is just under 4.3 million. This project also has been approved by Oakland County to receive 2023 Local Road Improvement Program funds in the amount of $200,833. Southfield's share of this project will be paid out of the Local Street Land Improvements account. So looking for a council to authorize the award to Proline Asphalt Paving and approves the cost share agreement with Oakland County.
Counsel, any questions? Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move the approval of the receipt of bids for Twickenham Valley Road Improvements and the approval of the cost partition, participation agreement with the award going to Proline Asphalt Paving as presented here tonight.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the receipt of bids for the Twickenham Valley Road Improvement and Approval of the Cost Participation Agreement for Oakland County, job number 2386 SFLD and LRIP, project number 2023-31. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're always excited when more roads are being done. Next, we have our council portion. We have one item.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve the travel expense report for Councilwoman Lanny Taylor to the Mackinac Policy Conference, May 30 through June 2.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilman Frazier, to approve the travel expense reimbursement report for Councilwoman Taylor to attend the Mackinac Policy Conference. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention, motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Frazier, do you have anything for us this evening?
I do not.
All right. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. I would just like to remind the public that there will be a gazebo concert tomorrow at the Historical Berg Site and it will start at 7:00 until 8:30. I apologize, I don't know who the band is, but I heard last week it was very well-attended. Also, this coming Friday, the 28th of July, there will be Summer in the City Concert here on the municipal campus. That will also be from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. And then we also have on Monday, July 31st, the city of Southfield is to host the Gun Violence Community Forum and that will be located here at City Hall from 5:30 to 8:30. Thank you.
Counselman Cruz?
No, I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
Yes, I have an item for the veterans. On August 17, 2023, at Oakland County's Oak Park in Claussen, Clarkston, at the Pine Grove Picnic Clinic, there will be a veteran's food fair, food drive, food will be given away. But in addition, this one is kind of for veterans appreciation. The county will be issuing parking vehicle permits that will be, that will not expire until December 31 of 2023. parking vehicle permits that will be, that will not expire until December 31 of 2029. So this is a very appreciative individuals who are, who appreciate parks and recreation. This will be a pass that you will be able to attain. It will be, again, August 17 to 20, August 17 in Clarkston at the Pine Grove Picnic Shelter.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hoag?
Yeah, Mr. Zar, I have a quick question. Nine Mile, is that rural hours too? So on Nine Mile, headed west at Telegraph, there's a big pothole. And those, if you don't know it, you're going to hit right into it, and I know it, and I still hit right into it every time, and it's been there for a while now. If possible, if we could get that filled. Yeah, literally right on the border of Nine Mile at Telegraph. And you really won't see it until you hit it, and...
I would also encourage you to use the Southfield Solutions app, which can geolocate the problem and send it directly to the public works.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Zar, I sent your email, and the mayor talked to me already, but if you could, if you have some talking points you could share with me about that email, I appreciate it. Okay, that's all.
Do you want to share with the rest of us, or?
No, it's a learning curve for me.
Okay, got it. All right. Is that it?
Thank you.
All right. It was mentioned earlier in the meeting, I'm just going to repeat it, that next week, Monday, July 31st, here at City Hall, we will, we will be hosting a gun violence community forum. We will have our police chief, as well as four other local law enforcement leaders, participate in a forum to address gun violence solutions in metro Detroit. It is, again, scheduled for the July 31st from 5:30 to 8:30 in the Southfield Pavilion, and it will be an interactive discussion, so please come and be ready to discuss some solutions. With that, Mr. Mayor?
Just one thing to remind all of you. Last meeting, one of our residents came forward from nation outside. You should have received this flyer, I think it's in your mailbox. They're looking to have Southfield represented at this event from 12 to 3 PM in Pontiac. This is about giving a second chance to people who have been incarcerated, to give them employment and back on, back on their feet. I know our police department, our police chief has a copy of this. So there, I will be out of town that day, so I cannot attend, but hoping somebody would be willing to attend.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I don't see that in my mailbox. Could I have a copy?
I'm thinking he's, it's in the mailbox, in the back room, not email.
I just looked.
I have, it's fair.
Thank you.
Mailbox, email box, all the same.
All the same. Thank you.
Anything else?
Anybody else need one?
Sorry.
Anything else?
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Administrator?
Yes, this evening, under Communications, there was a resident who brought to our attention regarding lawn restoration and street repairs, Aberdeen Street. Last week, Councilwoman Taylor had called me, and I happened to just be in that neighborhood as, as, as she called me hands-free, and so I did drive the streets, and at least, it's city engineer Schultz and I had a conversation, and just for the record, we've not closed those streets out, the projects. They're still open, that restoration. The, the actual lawn, looks like the weeds took really more so, there's probably more weed than there is grass. And so we'll continue to monitor it. I will point out that it was a very dry spring, early summer, and now this rain has come out, and the weeds have just seemed to have popped. So we'll continue to monitor that, but we do not close these projects out. To that restoration is in a much better shape. The streets look good, the curb and the streets, nice riding surface, the curb work was well-done. So we'll continue to monitor that, and it's, and I, we will, as Ms. Banks has requested, I'll have Ms. Schultz get a full email out to the entire council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crum is in the back of the house here. His, he also complained about the restoration.
He should, yeah.
You're on Pierce? Pierce.
Pierce, yeah.
Besides, I think it's...
We were right, I...
Throughout the neighborhood.
Yeah.
That's, that's usually the number one complaint of after the construction, is always the grass restoration.
And to Mr. Crum, I did report this the first time you asked about it to Ms. Schultz.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Good evening. I have nothing to add.
Madam Clerk?
Nothing to say, you're...
All right, we have nothing from the treasurer, planner, assessor engineer, nothing to schedule. Anything else that needs to come before our council?
Mr. Chair, one, one second. I hate to prolong this, but this is a compliment, and it had to do with our lobby. I just want to thank the, the mayor and the art commission with respect to the, making our lobby appealing, more appealing than it has been in years. When I first got on council, and the lobby was obviously drab and not too appealing, and I even had individuals speak to me, residents, about the state of the lobby. So I just want to just throw that compliment out now, because every time I walk in, I'm pleased with the aesthetic and the appeal of the lobby.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Brightwell. I also will tell all of the council that a new display will start on August 1st. The next quarter is coming up, so this current display will be going down soon, another week.
Okay. Seeing nothing else to come before the council, this meeting is adjourned.